Who live here is greatly appreciated. Your courage to stand up and be the voice for those of us who don't always agree with the majority is admirable. I'm extremely grateful for all your hard work and your unwavering support of our wonderful library. You truly are our library heroes. It is with much gratitude I applaud your unbiased efforts to improve our city and its government. Thank you all so very, very much. You will be missed. As a token of my appreciation, I do have some things to give to you. And again, thank you for being our voice and for standing for us. And a special thank you for Robin, City Clerk, for a job well done. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
My name is Brenda, and I would like to express my sincere gratitude to Natalie, Rhonda, Dan, and Robin for their service. You have dedicated yourselves to the citizens of Huntington Beach and have been the voices of reason amidst unprecedented challenges. Natalie, Rhonda, and Dan, your courage in stepping up to run for office, knowing the stress and strain that lay ahead, was truly commendable. Robin, your dedication to both your staff and the community has been nothing short of exemplary. Your presence will be profoundly missed. Thank you for your unwavering commitment and service to our city. And I have a small token for you to say thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Good evening, Mayor Vandermark and City Council. Also, special kudos to those of you who will not be here. You will be so missed for having done every consideration to do the right thing. I'm Karen Carroll, and I'm here tonight with my friend and fellow housing advocate, Pat Goodman, Pat Goodman, to recognize the fourth anniversary of the opening of the Huntington Beach Navigation Center. It opened in December 2020 in the height of the pandemic. The Navigation Center is a transitional shelter for the unhoused residents of Huntington Beach. The Navigation Center took years to come to fruition. In 2011, yes, 13 years ago, the former Huntington Beach Mayors Ralph Bauer and Shirley Detloff brought together the faith-based community, first responders, community development, businesses, landlords, and individuals to try to identify solutions to homelessness. In 2014, the City Council formed a homeless task force charged with identifying recommendations that would fit the needs of Huntington Beach residents. Most of the recommendations have been successfully implemented. The Navigation Center was one of its recommendations. They determined that a navigation center is the best fit for the city because it provides an array of services to stabilize people's lives: legal services, healthcare, job search skills, counseling, nutrition, and budgeting. These wonderful services are really components of the client's number-one priority, to develop a housing plan so they can permanently address their housing insecurity, their needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Hi. We know there's more work to be done, but for now, we want to celebrate and thank the good work of the Navigation Center, the Homeless Task Force, the current City Council and previous City Councils by showing this video from the website of someone whose life has been affected for the good. Thank you.
It was tough. It was a tough thing. It wasn't something that I liked. I don't like being dirty. I don't like a lot of the behavior that goes on out there. My way of life wasn't homelessness, you know? It wasn't something that I was used to or I even liked, you know? But I know how to pull my bootstraps up. Coming from a military family, my dad, I know to never give up and just to pull your bootstraps up and you deal with it. In fact, the people on the streets, as a joke, they call me G.I. Jane. I had no support, and the people that I was around, I had just met. And the people that I knew in my past, you know, I haven't seen them in years. So it was a lack of support. The day before Christmas, my brakes went out of my car, and I was stranded. I could not do anything. So I told her, oh, I'm stuck, you know? And she asked me if I could and if I was capable of driving to this address. So I show up there, and it's the City of Huntington Beach Mechanic Expert Tech. And these people treated me like I was Queen Elizabeth. I thank the City of Huntington Beach Police Officers. I thank them. I thank Mercy House at the Navigation Center. I think PATH. I think the caseworkers at the task force and the non-caseworkers. I thank everybody that has helped me. They just, they blessed me. The City of Huntington Beach has blessed me.
Next speaker?
Hi. There's a video I'd like to have shown, please.
Homelessness was a really big issue, and very few cities are prosecuting crimes related to the homelessness, but our legal department is.
Yeah, we've been incredibly effective at prosecuting all kinds of crimes, but that does include enforcing and prosecuting our anti-camping and our anti-loitering laws, which has been massive. We've been getting stay-away orders from judges. We've been getting stipulated stay-away orders from defendants, and that basically means that those individuals are not allowed to physically be in our downtown area or in our parks and other places throughout the city. So the program has been very effective, and as you know, Huntington Beach is the only city in the entire region, the only city in the entire region, that has seen a steady drop in homelessness here in the city. And what's even more remarkable than that is that overall, over the past five years, our homeless population out on the street is down 60%. So I think through the great leadership and firm enforcement posture that the City Council has brought to bear, and also our work to enforce, and then also our police department's work to go out and engage the homeless population and resolve the issues, I think that's just been a great combination of effort that has really tackled the problem, and it's been effective. And I don't think there's any other city in the state of California out of 482 cities that can say that.
Well, thank you for taking the time to take on all those battles. I know some other legal departments would not have done this, so we're grateful as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd also just like to give a heartfelt thank you to Natalie, Rhonda, Dan, and Robin. Thank you, guys. I'm going to add to your bell.
Next speaker?
Hi, I'm TJ England. I had very mixed feelings about coming tonight, but I really wanted to recognize Karen and Rhonda and Dan, and thank you as City Council members for your courage and your service to the City of Huntington Beach and to our nation. Your intelligent knowledge of how local government should work has been an inspiration to many of us. We will miss you sincerely. We hope to see you sharing your knowledge and experience of government in the future in many government positions in this state. You are needed. Some people aren't qualified to govern. We pray for your future and for our city government in the coming months. Thank you again for your service. You're wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My name is Mr. Amory Hanson. I'm speaking tonight in support of IAM 26, the side agreement to the memorandum of understanding between the Huntington Beach Fire Office, Firefighters Association, and Huntington Beach. Increasing the uniform allowance will allow more firemen opportunity to serve our community. Opportunities to allow more public safety should be considered. Once again, I urge a yes vote on IAM 26. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Thank you, Mayor Vandermark, Huntington Beach City Council members and staff, 45-year resident Patricia Pappas. I'm happy to be here tonight. I first want to make a special thank you to Councilwoman Moser for all that she's done for our parks, and I've seen her out there, and I appreciate that. I also want to thank all of you accomplished, all that you've accomplished since the 2020 I've prepared a document listing some of the accomplishments. While people come and complain time after time at council meetings, you have quietly worked to support infrastructure, all of you, projects, and worked diligently to make Huntington Beach a better city. Recently, HB was listed as one of the kindest cities nationwide, so I thank you for that. After I speak, or at some time, you're going to be getting this handout, I've been observing and I've been discussing with council members so many of the positives that have come on since 2022. There have been budget deficits that have been eliminated and great surpluses in our first two budgets. It says more about that in your document. One example of a savings was to reduce the salary of the manager of the person that was in charge of the homelessness program. He resigned, and his salary was reduced at a savings to the city. Also, 55 people that were homeless were moved into permanent housing for significantly less money than the previous years. There's so many things. The police were able to crack down on crime. You can really feel that in the city, and I thank you for that.
Next 10 speakers?
Last call for David Cowings, and then, go ahead, Mr. Cowings.
Thank you for letting me speak for a few minutes. So my name is, I'm here basically regarding recovery centers and sober living homes. That's why I'm here. My name is David Cowings. I've been in Huntington Beach for probably 20-plus years. I have had a business here for 20-plus years in the city of Huntington Beach. I have five kids, nine grandchildren, so I'm very much wanting to keep our neighborhoods and our community nice and clean and family. So having said all that, I own a home on 11th Street, 225 11th Street. I've had that home for 17 years. In addition to that, I have a home on 9th Street. I have another home on 15th Street, and I have recently been advised that my next-door neighbor's home at 221, that's why I'm here, 221 11th Street, is going to be converted to a men's, or potentially a men's recovery home. And I'm very much against that, and my neighbors are very much against that. So I wanted to make a point to get that onto the agenda tonight. So I'm here tonight to voice my concern over the concentration of these licensed and unlicensed facilities in the neighborhood. If Pace Recovery does get a license for the house next door to me, they will have six, six homes within two blocks. I have identified over 25 homes within just the numbered streets myself. Some are licensed, some are not, and there's going to be many more coming online after the Airbnbs and all of that. So I'm just very concerned about that. You know, and I'll just go back to this, these homes, you know, there's kids that live here in the neighborhoods, you know? They're walking to school. That's why we move here. We move here for the schools. So we have children walking to school, pass these recovery homes. I've got three little girls, two doors down, walking by a home with six men.
Thank you. Could you please fill out a blue form?
Yes.
So we can contact you.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Okay. The next 10 speakers, please come down to both podiums. Wendy Rincon, Jeannie Widget, Gigi Jackson, Bee Chanel, Bethany Webb, Connie Boardman, Mary Ann Sealander, Ken Inoue, Tom Dillman, and Debbie Cook.
Thank you. First speaker, go ahead.
Wendy Rincon, 50-year resident. I am of the age where legacy matters. I've lost both my parents. They raised me here. I wish that more people in our community thought about legacy, and they understood that whether we're on one side or the other, we are all one HB community. It was demonstrated to me earlier that that's just not going to be the case with some of the incoming council members. I hope that that changes. I hope that my concerns prove to be unfounded. We're not off to a good start, butch. With that said, legacy, Natalie, Rhonda, Dan, the legacy that you are leaving, your community, is something to be incredibly proud of. Your family, your children in particular, because I know it matters to me what my kids think of me, I hope that your kids realize what you did for our community, not just for those that voted for you. Every time you took a vote, it was for our entire community, whether everyone believed it or not. I've never heard an "us" versus "them." I've never seen you on Facebook saying it's "me" or "them." I've never seen you on Facebook supporting other candidates, making snarky comments to us residents. We are HB residents, all of us. So if you want to sit on our side, you are welcome to sit on our side. I hope I'm welcome on that side. I'm thinking I'm not, just by what was said earlier. So legacy, I don't think everyone on this dais thinks about your legacy. Someday, someone's going to have to say words about you, and I hope that they are words that you and your family could be proud of, because right now, the only ones that I think can be truly proud of the jobs that they've done, Dan, Rhonda, and Natalie.
Thank you. Next speaker?
And Robin.
And Robin. You pass it to Robin. Bethany Webb, 40-plus-year resident. This is for Natalie, Rhonda, and Dan. Sophlicly, sorry, said, "Rather fail with honor than win with fraud." You have legislated, you have wrapped your honor in everything you've done from up there, and Robin, you too, over there. It has been my pleasure, such a great gift for my vote for you, the confidence I put in you, that at no point did you do anything other than honor your position on the City Council and as City Clerk, and do justice to our city as the beautiful people of light you are. I brought some white lilies, stargazers, and the symbolism of them is innocence, sympathy, and everlasting love. That's what you take with you from those of us that saw you, recognized you, and respected you, our everlasting love and honor. I'm going to leave these for you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Good evening, everyone. I was not going to come tonight, but I had to. So greetings, Mayor, City Council, and staff. My name is Gigi Jackson. I'm a resident and homeowner in Huntington Beach. My few words tonight is an opportunity to thank Natalie, Rhonda, and Dan, and Robin for your dedication and all that you did and you will continue to do. You've maintained integrity, high standards, and demonstrated amazing courage for your service and standing in your truth, reflecting the objectives of the residents of Huntington Beach. Know that you will be missed. I leave you with this scripture from Jeremiah 29:11. It's one of my favorites. "For I know the thoughts that I think towards you, say it to the Lord, thoughts of peace and not of evil, and to give you an unexpected end." Thank you all for what you did. Robin, this is for you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Good evening, Kathy Ryder, 39 years as a homeowner and a voter here in Huntington Beach. I'm going to begin by thanking our three council members who will be leaving, and also a heartfelt thanks to Robin for the wonderful job she has done. In the Bible, there are 111 scriptures that reference the word "love." Here's a couple that are pretty well-known. Love is patient. Love is kind. It does not envy. It does not boast. It is not proud. It does not dishonor others. It is not self-seeking, and it is not easily angered. And at the end of the passage, it says, "And now these three remain, faith, hope, and love; but the greatest of these is love." And from John, "A new commandment I give you: love one another, as I have loved you, so you must love one another." Well, on Friday, November 8th, at 5:10:20 PM, I was silently expressing my First Amendment rights by walking down Main Street carrying this banner with the words "Choose Love." A bystander chose to rip it out of my hands and throw it on the ground. This individual then walked behind me using inappropriate language for several blocks. And I was told by this person, "Go ahead, call the police. They're on my side." I'm merely carrying a sign that says "Choose Love." So for those of you who are followers of Jesus, know that I will always choose love. Will you?
Thank you. Next speaker?
Good evening, council members. My name is Connie Boardman. I'd first like to recognize Robin's service to the city and thank her for her decades of service to the people of Huntington Beach, and congratulations on your retirement. Council members Bolton, Kelmick, and Moser, thank you for your service to our community. Over the past years, I've appreciated your approach to governing, which is based on respect for your constituents, facts, logic, integrity, and honesty. I know that all three of you have always had in mind what is best for our community overall when you make your decisions. I know you wanted, you worked to make Huntington Beach a welcoming place to live, work, and visit. I thank you for your respect for groups of people who have been historically marginalized and discriminated against. I also appreciate your respect for our city staff, our charter, council policies, protocols, and your respect for the law. Thank you for trying to protect the interests of the taxpayers in opposing the scandalous giveaway of public funds in the lawsuit settlement with Code For, the company that runs the air show. I appreciate your opposition to that settlement. Thanks for trying to keep large sums of money out of council races by opposing raising the contribution limit from $560 to $5,500 per person. I appreciate the efforts and progress you made towards addressing our homelessness issues. I know that's a very important issue to all three of you, and I thank you for your attention to it. Thank you for your outspoken defense of our libraries and our librarians. Parents are the best ones to decide what their own children should check out of the library, not a committee of political appointees. Thank you for standing up for the parents in our city by opposing the book banning committee. All three of you were active in our community prior to being elected to office. While it is a huge loss to Huntington Beach that you're leaving, I hope you consider continuing or adding to your community involvement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mary Ann Sealander, and I've lived here since 1978. Thank you to Natalie, Rhonda, and Dan for speaking truth to power during your terms. You considered every issue that came before you with thoughtful and insightful consideration. You represented a huge faction of the city when you put the needs of Huntington Beach over the needs of the majority, whose focus was culture wars and division. Your leadership will be missed. I came tonight to address the funding for our school districts. Do you have my clip ready? I'll go ahead and talk about the federal funding for our schools, which comes through the Department of Education. Excuse me, what's your name? Mary Ann Sealander. You can put it on any time, and I'll stop. Okay, we don't have sound. He's talking about ending.
Out of 40, we're ranked about number 40, and I'm going to close the Department of Education and move education back to the states.
Can you turn it up?
Maybe I'll have you do that. I'll use Lee. Maybe I'll have you, you could do it. Not too easy. We'll get somebody great. We'll get, Lee Zeldin is here with us tonight. We'll get, I think that's a job for Lee.
Well, you couldn't hear the beginning, but he wants to end the Department of Education. And this is what you voted for. You voted to stop funding that helps cover our K through 12 public schools, student financial aid for college students, special education programs, and initiatives to improve the educational outcomes. It also provides grants for low-income students. 3% of our Huntington Beach School District funds come from the Department of Education, 9% of Ocean View, 3% of the Huntington Beach Union High School District, and nearly 10% of our community college budget.
How are you going to pay for it? Next speaker? Go ahead.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council members, city staff, and fellow residents of Huntington Beach. My name is Tom Dillman, and I live here in HB. As our elected representatives, your primary goal should be carrying out the will of the people. As we've seen from the recent election, the majority of our community is not interested in high-density housing projects that don't conform to our zoning requirements. To be clear, we are not against senior housing. We can live with a three-story version of this project. You have been given a second chance to recognize that reality and do the right thing for yourselves and for our community by voting no on ordinance number 4327. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Yes, for the record, my name is Debbie Cook. Dan, Natalie, Rhonda, and Robin, thank you so much for your service to our community. You served with integrity, honesty, and an unwavering commitment to the people of the city. Thank you for your dedication to the greater good and enduring countless hours of highly-charged public comment, something I would not wish on anybody. I look forward to seeing the ways you will continue to challenge these bonkers times that we face. And so on that note, I have advice for anyone else feeling uncertain about our future. Humanity is constantly navigating crises, so here are three tips. First, focus on what you can control. Maybe it's just a vegetable garden, but that can feel empowering. Take a break from noise. Turn off social media. It's a toxin that leads you to a dark place. And three, find perspective in history. I particularly enjoy studying the rise and fall of the Roman Empire. Remember, Rome only controlled Britain for 350 years, so nothing lasts forever. Humans are resilient and adaptable, and that is ultimately our counterbalance to uncertainty. So go forth and continue to lead with dignity and a sense of purpose. Thanks, you guys.
Thank you. Next speaker? Go ahead.
Hi. First, I'd like to say thank you, Natalie, Rhonda, Dan, and Robin, for all that you've done for this city. And next, I have a video. So we were victorious with getting enough signatures in our first petition.
You're a fucking child indoctriment, motherfucker is what you are. You fucking whore. You guys are all whores. You guys are all the motherfuckers that like tried to fucking turn Trump in for nothing, right? You ought to be ashamed of yourself. Read the petition. I did. You guys are frauds. Read the petition. Law and fraud. You're fucking frauds. You're fucking frauds. You're a liar, and you're frauds. Fuck you.
16,779.
Next speaker?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. My name is Kenny Inoue, 50-year resident of Huntington Beach. I'd like to spend a few minutes today talking about the character and quality of individuals that are living in our City Council. Natalie Moser, I love you to pieces. I know you've always worked for the people that haven't had a voice.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. My name is Kenny Nowey, 50-year resident of Huntington Beach. I'd like to spend a few minutes today talking about the character and quality of individuals that are living in our city council. Natalie Moser, I love you to pieces. I know you've always worked for the people that haven't had a voice, and hundreds of hours you spent on the homeless, developing the homeless issues criteria that we have in, mechanism we have in the city, is paying off now. As has been stated, we have a reduction in homelessness, so thank you. Rhonda, I've loved to work with you. I've observed your razor-sharp legal mind, and you've continually brought to the city council a very concise analysis of the legal impact and implications of city council actions. So thank you very much, you will be missed. Dan, you're one of the most intelligent, quick-minded individuals I've ever met, and I give you the highest compliment ever, you give me a headache because you think so fastly. Your knowledge and ability to analyze facts will be missed, and it's been an honor for me to know you. And Ms. Robin, I want to thank you, is she here? I want to thank you so much. When I navigated this thing running for office two years ago, you were so helpful to make sure I didn't bump into trees. And, you know, thank you so much. Ladies and gentlemen, today we should all stand united to thank all of these individuals that have spent time, you may not agree with them, but they have spent so much of their time working for the well-being in this city, and I would like to thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, go ahead.
Hello, 35-year resident. Tonight, I'm here to pay respect to our amazing city council members Natalie Moser, Dan Kalmick, and Rhonda Bolton. In addition, provide a huge thank you to Robin Estenislau. You all have been steadfast in your representation for the good in our city. Despite the hate shown toward you, you have held your heads high, represented the many voices and concerns of your constituents. We are so proud of you and the legacy that you will leave as the betterment of our city. We salute you, we will miss you. You have served us with dignity. Please, keep making good trouble. I have some flowers. If you could please distribute them, I'd appreciate it.
All right. Thank you.
I'm going to call the next ten. Brian Thenis, Mary Kyle, Libby, Russ Neal, Catherine Goddard, Jonathan Bonwit, Laura Sire, Tim Geddes, Christine Podeski, and... Dinara? There you go.
Thank you. First speaker, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor Vandermark and Phil, council members and residents of the city of Huntington Beach. My name is Brian Thenis, and I'm here to speak about the Bolsochica Senior Care Facility. If you voted for this project, you did vote for high density, and I think that the facts are undisputable. The Code for Residential and Commercials first paragraph says, in the code that defines what you can and can't build, says that it's, the intent is to implement the general plan. And the general plan states, "Density applies to residential and mixed-use designations that allow for residential development. Number of dwelling units per acre and intensity applies to non-residential developments." This project was described by the developer as a residential care facility, not a hospital. It was a residential care facility. When you, when you go into the development standards where Hines pulled out this floor-area ratio of 1.5 and said, "Hey, we almost comply," it says, "This is for commercial uses," or it says, "Non-residential uses." And for residential uses, you have to go to the RMH standards. And the RMH standards would only allow 70 units to be built on this property. I know I'm right. I intend to prove it in court. I think you probably heard about that. So if, 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 if you voted for this project, and you didn't intend to vote for high-density residential, then please vote no on ordinance 4327 tonight and, and take it back and let us end the fight and square up this project and make it more consistent with the general plan that hundreds of people wrote, Dan, and you were part of it. Hundreds of people were involved in that, committees, and you guys just blew it off in one meeting.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Mary Kyle, and I'm here to thank council members Rhonda, Natalie, and Dan, and City Clerk Robin for their tireless work. You have brought reason and integrity to the city council. You stood in the fire and never quit. I can't thank you enough. I have some flowers here, they are a small token of my gratitude.
Good evening. My name is Jonathan Bonwit, 15-year-plus resident in Huntington Beach. I'm here to ask you and appeal to you, please repeal your vote to approve the Bolsochica Senior Center. I think there are some, some considerations that weren't really forthwith. Shamefully, Hines and Clearwater misled the city on multiple declarations in order to get the project approved. I feel like we were played. Daniel Morgan, their chief operating officer of Clearwater, misled the city when Morgan stated last meeting, quote, "We require our residents to sign a resident services agreement, not a residential lease," implying this is not a residential property. That is not true. They have a 68-page resident and care agreement she's referring to. It's actually a residential lease. It contains the same terms and conditions as a standard residential apartment rental agreement. It's the same type of agreement. They just put a different name on it, and they combine it with a services agreement so they can sell services to their tenants. But rest assured, it is a residential apartment rental lease. Contract law holds that the four corners of a contract contain and define all the terms and conditions that apply to said contract. The four corners, it's not what Hines says, it's not what Lawless says, and they're trying to mislead the council that this is a hospital or hospital-type. Wrong. The four corners of the contract define it. That contract is defined and controlled by landlord-tenant laws. Tenants sign a month-to-month lease. The fact that the renters that they target are over 55 years of age does not make this a hospital. They establish, the contract establishes, a landlord-tenant relationship. A landlord-tenant relationship, not a hospital-patient relationship. Their tenants sign month-to-month leases. If no one pays their rent, they have to evict them, go to court and evict them. Hospitals don't have to do that. By all means, you, we've been all misled to think...
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker.
My name's Laura Sire, and I am a longtime resident of Huntington Beach. Good evening, Mayor, and Mayor Protam and council members. I am here tonight, and a lot of things have already been said, a lot of really awesome things that, that three of our council members, I think, deserve. And I'm really sad, actually, that you won't be here on the dais, because if I wasn't at the meetings, I watched them at home, and I was always so proud and impressed with your, your hard work and your dedication, and, you know, your love of people who live in this town. Sorry, I'm a little emotional. Anyway, thank you so very much, and thanks to Robin, our city clerk, who's done a great job for, I didn't even know, many decades, I guess. And she's ready to retire, that's for sure. One more thing, I just wanted to especially mention about Natalie, because somebody, I agree with this, said that Natalie Moser was the heart and soul of Huntington Beach. And I think she is, and she just comes from the heart, and she has empathy, and we can all learn from her. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, go ahead.
I'm here on behalf of Pride of the Pier. Huntington Beach is where our nonprofit was born, and Huntington Beach has kept us busy. As council members Moser, Kalmick, and Bolton have terms that are ending, we'd like to acknowledge their significant work on this council. All three voted against the pride flag ban last spring and tore through the dog whistles to accurately describe it as such. Moser said during that debate, quote, "It makes us look like the city everyone expects us to be. I don't believe we are that city. I believe we're better than that." We agree. They voted against the dismantling of the Huntington Beach Human Relations Commission, as well as the embarrassing rewrite on our statement of human dignity. They voted against the illegal city-wide forced outing policy. And of course, they have worked hard to defend our city library against fear mongering. Allyship isn't a name tag, it's a verb. And service to your, to your community matters even when it feels impossible. Council members Bolton, Moser, and Kalmick, we acknowledge this incomplete description of your hard work to stand as ethical leaders in this space, and we look forward to your continued allyship as private citizens. And as a private citizen myself, I have flowers for our forward-departing public servants, including Robin Estenislau. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
On September 17th, there was an agenda item asking the city manager and the police department to evaluate the physical security in the council chambers and provide suggestions for improvement, particularly with regards to weapons. Unfortunately, even the research was voted down. I'm hopeful that the incoming council will readdress this issue. While you council members are relatively safe with officers around you and sitting behind a Kevlar dais, we, the public, are not. If a crazed person were to come into these chambers with a weapon and shoot at the council, you will all duck behind your Kevlar protection, and these officers will fire up at the perpetrator. While I have a lot of respect for these officers' abilities, I am not confident that they will be a perfect shot and only hit the shooter. It's likely that the engaged public will become collateral damage. If you truly love your city and want the citizens to feel safe in these chambers, please reconsider that item. Now I want to take a moment to thank council members Moser, Bolton, Kalmick, and City Clerk Estenislau. Your dedicated service and professionalism have not gone unnoticed. It was a pleasure to hear from council members that were always well-prepared. We know that the best council members, the best policy is not one that is rubber-stamped, but one that is challenged, critiqued, and modified. Unfortunately, we've watched the remaining council members, with rare exceptions, vote in lockstep with ever, without ever making adjustments along the way. I expect we are in for several more years of governance without consideration of consequences or tweaks that could make things better. Natalie, Rhonda, Dan, and Robin, thank you again for your service.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Catherine Goddard, I've been a resident since the 1980s here, and I, I think we all can recognize that we're at a pinch point in history, not only in this city, but in this nation, and indeed globally. And it's extremely difficult, always to try to represent a community, especially, you've all have seen in the city, but to, to understand that we're at a pinch point in history, literally, and that we all need to be able to work together to find how we will recreate what we have been doing for the last 250 years. And that's, as you stand back from history, I do want to recognize the part that was played by our three council members, and Robin, Estenislau, during these last two, well, four years, well, two years, I guess, in all. But the point is, it's been an incredibly difficult time to try and listen to one another in the midst of the division we have created in this country. And I honor those, especially Natalie, Rhonda, and Dan, who have been able to speak up even when the communication between citizens and council have been closed down by the majority. We don't longer have the commissions and committees and a way to represent what we would like to see done. I do thank the three of you for representing my ideas and my values, and I do thank Robin for all that she has done to keep us on a steady course. It's not easy to kind of steer the rudder, keep things in line, so we can at least have minutes and guidance as to what we should do. So thanks to the four of you very much, and let's see what we do next. We're all still here.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good, good evening. My name is Russell Neal, and I live in Huntington Beach. With respect to the Bolsochica Senior Center, I would like to point out that this is a perfect example of local control and local accountability. We are not being told to allow or disallow this project by Sacramento bureaucrats. The decision is being made by people we know at a level where our votes count. Love this project or hate it, the decision is being made at the right level of government. Huntington Beach's battle to retain local control of local affairs is a battle to save the principle of government by the consent of the governed. And all eyes are upon us. High density or low density, the decision should be made at the level of the people affected by officials accountable to them. Proverbs 29:2 says, "When the righteous are in authority, the people rejoice; but when the wicked bear rule, the people mourn." This election has added righteous members to our council, willing to continue the fight for government by the consent of the governed, and for that, I rejoice. Together with Trump's national victory, we have been given a fighting chance to snatch victory from the jaws of a leviathan that had nearly swallowed us up. And so, at this Thanksgiving season, we give thanks to God in heaven, and thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tim Geddes here. As I was standing in line of the speakers, I couldn't help but look at the portraits of all the mayors and some of my heroes from 20 years ago, Debbie, Connie, Jill. I hope we get back to those days. I would like to start by thinking, thanking the three outgoing members of the city council, Natalie Moser, Rhonda Bolton, and Dan Kalmick, for their leadership and service during their time on the dais. I applaud their representation of the community and its best interests. I also applaud the wonderful job of our outgoing city clerk, Robin Estenislau. She will be greatly missed. In addition, I would like to congratulate her endorsed candidate, Regina Blankenhorn, on running a brave but uphill and unfortunately unsuccessful battle to bring expertise and experience to the city clerk's office. Now, all the guardrails are off. The local election has created a larger majority for mischief, but not a mandate for malfeasance. I would remind the amateur authoritarians now on the dais that their primary commitment should be to solve problems, address needs, and better represent our community. It should not be engaging in culture wars or picking fights the city will surely lose. Surf City will now have its oversight from our new congressman, Dave Min, and the powers that be in Sacramento. My message to our new local government going forward, don't overreach, don't screw up, and don't let us down.
Thank you. Next speaker, go ahead.
My name is Christine Podeski. I've been a Huntington Beach resident for 43 years, and once again, I'm here to address the Brightwater Senior Project. You've already voted on this once, and it's a second reading tonight, and I'm urging you to reconsider your vote. One reason to change your vote on a project is if the developer has misled you in their documents or if new information comes to light. Hines, the developer, and Clearwater, the project operator, I believe, have misled city council on many important facts. First, they significantly undercounted the number of tenants who will live in this residential building. Clearwater's apartment rental agreement, which they use for every complex they manage, including similar senior living centers, allows every tenant to add extra beds into their units for spouses or roommates. their units for spouses or roommates. Those who need assisted living care are allowed to bring in their own staff for these purposes as well. Heinz misled the city council by stating that only 159 residents will live in 159 separate units in this project. This is not accurate since each of the 159 units can add extra beds to their units, which increases the potential occupancy rate. Increasing the occupancy rate even by 25 to 50% negates the traffic study, which must be corrected and resubmitted, and invalidates the parking space study that was done for only 159 tenants, not more. Presumably, if spouses or roommates live with residents, many of these will have vehicles, and this project is significantly underparked. Increasing the occupancy rate invalidates the environmental impact report and must be corrected. If the parking study, traffic study, and EIR are all understated, they must each be resubmitted. Therefore, I urge you to either vote no tonight in order to repeal your approval of this project, or delay your vote and then send it back to the developer to correct these filings and resubmit for future consideration.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Good evening to everyone. My name is Dinora. I happen to be a Shaqle Latina from Havana, Cuba, brought to this country by the U.S. government federal. We grew up in Jobalinda in 1969. We were being bused to Orange Heights, to Dallas, how do I speak English? American, told us, "You see something, say something." The problem in this country, that the illegal aliens are taking over housing. And I worked for almost 40 years and paid taxes as a single lady. They call us seniors. You qualify for subsidy, a nice house, whether it's Jobalinda, Huntington Beach, you name it, and at a 20 Hispanic or more, you have Mexico, because I need to nip it in the bud so everybody knows who's creating problem for Americans and Cubans. And it's not right in every city in Orange County, you have to keep the culture mixed like it was when we were growing up. I have great family from Mexico from the '70s, but in the '70s, they were not running nothing in this country. And I have a lot of great sheriff beside my family. In Orange County, they got to hear me speaking at the board meeting since 2018, and they support me 100%. They become friends of mine, and I say, "We have to keep that culture mixed, especially for you guys, they're keeping us safe." And I urge the city manager to make me an appointment because I want to be able to speak to you privately, the sooner you can. But I want to tell America, this is a great country, and it's not right for the illegal aliens, the DACA, taking over in every city, and this is the reason why you see a lot of homeless. Not everybody's on drugs and alcohol, because I don't drink, I don't smoke, neither do drugs, and I have to put a complaint to Supreme Court. What the heck is happening here? I'm a quality Cuban American, and I have right to live in any city in this country.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Good evening, council. My name is Perry Clithera. Thank you for listening to me this evening. I wanted to start by thanking councilors Rhonda, Natalie, and Dan for your public service these past few years, and thank you for putting yourselves forward for reelection as well. I'm sorry we couldn't do enough to win. Thank you, Robin, for your decades of public service. I hope that all four of you will enjoy your Tuesday evenings a heck of a lot more than you have been. Regarding items 13 and 15, I would like to remind this council that there was a recent report that came out that showed our median rent for a three-bedroom home in the city is $5,600. That's tops for any mid-sized city in this nation. The Brightwater and Edinger developments are good and worthy projects that will serve Huntington Beach well for years to come, besides contributing to our housing stock and, well, maybe ticking down rent $10 or something, who knows? Who will also go to help fix our city's budget issues. The Brightwater development alone is going to bring in $3.5 million in development fees before we even consider the huge annual increase to our property tax revenue that it will bring in. So these projects will help improve the streets, the parks, the water, the sewers, the schools for years to come. Please vote to continue pushing both projects through the seemingly endless bowels of our bureaucratic planning process. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Okay. It's the last group. Kathleen Mooney, Brian Villa, Tori Johnson, Monica Ashbury, Natalie Rocos, Michelle Ryan, Rick Brown. Come on down.
Anyone can walk up to the podium if you want to start speaking.
Good evening. My name is Kathleen Mooney. I've been a 48-year resident and homeowner in Huntington Beach. Tonight's second reading is to approve or reject the Bolsochica Senior Care Community Project, and it is your second chance to consider that this project has serious flawed assumptions, which merit a no vote. They tell us this is not high density. That's a flawed assumption. If so, why does the floor area ratios have to be amended in our building code? They say this is a commercial project. Why are there 159 apartments with contracts that clearly state this is residential property? What is commercial about that? This is a residential project. And we've been warned that this project is better than something else that could come along, and that is a flawed assumption. They would have us believe that the Middle Class Housing Act of 2022, SB 6 and AB 2011, unlock the development of additional mega housing, over which we would have no local say. However, the one-story commercial building that is adjacent to this property limits the building possibilities of the site, and that overrides SB 6 and AB 2011. I'm reminded of a phrase like lipstick on a pig. For those who may not be familiar with this phrase, putting lipstick on a pig means making superficial or cosmetic changes to a product in a futile effort to disguise its fundamental failings. These flawed assumptions are futile superficial attempts to disguise the fundamental failings of this project. Just like lipstick on a pig, it's still a pig. I support senior housing and welcome any proposal that meets our Huntington Beach building codes for such. This proposal does not. Please give it your no vote.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Good evening, Mayor Vandemark, Mayor Pro Tem Pat Burns, Tony Strickland, Casey McKeown, and other council members. And I mentioned all four of you because I think you guys have done a tremendous job. You've proven that great leadership that tackles big issues are really important to the residents here in Huntington Beach, and that's why Butch Twining, Don Kennedy, and Chad Williams are coming to support you because our citizens here in Huntington Beach resoundingly support you. I want you to know that. Also, on a national level, the good Lord has blessed all of us with the election of Donald Trump. We now have the presidency, we have the Congress, and we have the Senate. We're living in tremendously exciting times. We're going to fix the problems we've had in this country. There's been a lot of deceitfulness, there's been a lot of name-calling, and I think the time to fix that is now. And here on a local level, I think the false accusations about the banning of the books and the privatization of the library, which held no water whatsoever, these have been false narratives from day one, need to stop. And I think when you stop these things, you'll stop the problems we're having on both sides. We're calling each other names, and that needs to stop. And I'm really excited about the HB 3 coming into the dais, and God bless you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Good evening. I'm Michelle Ryan, and I am also here to speak about the Bolsochica Senior Living Center. After a 30-year career in finance, funding medium-sized businesses and both residential and commercial developers, overlapped by a 25-year career as an advocate for the homeless and underserved, including currently working to build a 53-unit, permanent supportive apartment project for chronically homeless women, I think I have come to deeply understand how we must make a place for all the many types of residential development that we need in our community. I've also spent a lot of time with developers, I've financed them. In fact, as they say, some of my best friends are developers. Developers are great business people, and they are promoters. Promoters seldom let the facts get in the way of a sale. And they are highly predictable in that they are always motivated by dollars and they possess elevated skills of persuasion. Well, surprise, a developer may have misled our planning commission and subsequently yourselves as to their intent in their enthusiasm to do what they do. In the case of the Bolsochica Senior Living Center, they have told us it is not a high-density development, but also, as they say, if it looks like a duck, waddles like a duck, and quacks like a duck, well, it's a duck. And that's okay. Anybody can be sold by skillful salespeople. Tonight, I'm hoping that we can undo a sale that should never have taken place. I'm speaking primarily to our departing council members. I have respect for you all. Your journey and the headwinds that you have fought during your terms have been extreme. I support and appreciate the integrity and balance that you have demonstrated.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Hi, good evening. My name is Monica Ashbury. I'm a resident of HB. I'm with the Orange Coast region of the Porsche Club, and I'm here this evening to invite and encourage participation from the council and the community to attend our annual USMC Toy Drive. Thanks to Chief Para and Captain Svenzbo, who continue to be instrumental in the police department's participation. The USMC Toy Drive is scheduled for Saturday, December 14th, from 10:00 to 2:00 at Central Park West, which is off Edwards. The Marines from the Seal Beach Base, HBPD's static SWAT display, K-9 and Equestrian teams will be present in addition to Santa for the kids. The Chick-fil-A Christmas Cow will also be in attendance from 10:00 to 12:00. This toy drive is open to everyone, and we certainly hope everyone is able to attend and participate. We have seen some city council members over the last couple of years, and it would be great to have full participation. Again, it's Saturday, December 14th, from 10:00 to 2:00 at Central Park West. The Marines will then collect the toys and distribute them to the underprivileged kids in Orange County. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Good evening. My name is Brian Villa. I'm a resident of the city, and if I knew it was going to be like this, I would have worn all black, because it feels like I'm at a funeral, and I feel like I'm part of that. I had something to do with that. Thank you. That's for you. It's been a long time. Things are happening in the city, and things are happening in this world. As we watch Orange County, our registrar's office is still counting votes. What's up with that? There's a lot of bad stuff that's going on, and it's all going to get fixed very soon. Yeah, exactly. You guys laugh. You guys are sitting here counting votes right now, huh? Really funny. Anyways.
Please don't shut out.
I'm not satisfied that we won. We have seven on, we're going to have seven on our side now. I hope you guys still come and participate because all your friends aren't here anymore. It's quiet in here tonight, right? Anyways, I'd like to know that the Department of Government Efficiency is moving here to our town. Yeah, I'd like to see it happen, because the last time I was speaking here, I was speaking about the decision in the Supreme Court that was handed down overturning the Chevron deal. You guys know about that? 90% of the government's going to get hacked, and I look forward to that. I am so excited about that. I look forward to the public schools, especially Ocean View School District, getting defunded. President Trump said all woke schools are not going to get any money. So there's a lot going on, and I'm very excited about what's going on in this city, in this country, and in this state. And you guys make a lot of noise here, make it happen. So I support you. I don't come up here and do your parliamentary speech and all that kind of stuff, but I have an opinion, and I make it known. I like what's going on. Keep it up.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Hello, council members. My name is Jignesh Paddyar, a lifelong resident of Huntington Beach. First off, I want to say thank you and congratulations to the winners of the election, Butch, Don, Chad, Lisa Lane, and Measure U as well. It counts, it passed, you know, and resoundingly, it passed in Huntington Beach. And a word of advice to all of the incoming candidates, you saw just how easily yet an individual come up here, speak about all the times these individuals who are leaving the dais voted no, whether it's the flag, whether it was the human decency or whatnot, and you can see exactly what happened. These new candidates, you guys coming in, you made promises on the campaign of what you're going to do for the city, and we're going to hold you to that. We want to make sure that when you campaign in Huntington Beach and you say your for-one thing, that you don't do the opposite, because when we come up here and we voice our opinion and our support for you, we're doing that because we believed you, and we don't want to be turned down, because this is exactly what happens. You have a flower funeral. That being said, however, if you take the time to notice that there is a red tide along the beach here, and if you go out and you can see the blue waves crashing, but sadly, there are no blue waves crashing in Huntington Beach, as evidenced by the most recent election, it was a red wave. Congratulations, Huntington Beach. We look forward to what we can do next.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Good evening, city council members. My name is Tori Johnson, the founder of Black Lives Matter Huntington Beach, and I'm a resident of Huntington Beach as well. I first want to extend my heartfelt gratitude to Natalie, Dan, Rhonda, and Regina. I'm sorry, I don't even know you. I'm going to keep it real. But I want to thank you for your unravering service to our community. You've shown time and time again that you actually listen to our residents, you stand up for what's right, and most of all, you hold people accountable. Your courage and integrity have been a light in challenging times, and I deeply appreciate each and every one of you for all of your services this past years that you've been here, you know? That said, I do have a really, I have a lot to say, you know? Like, I moved here to Huntington Beach in 2012 because it's my happy place, you know? And right now, it's like, it's really become a scary place to, it's not a welcoming place for anybody. Like, if you have money, you have a dream. Plenty of people have had a dream. They've showed up here with nothing, and they've gained everything. Gracie, you should know, you lived in your car with nothing, you know? You should not stop people from having a dream and creating a future inside of the city of Huntington Beach. That is our equal right, and we should all have that equal opportunity. And I'm super, super scared for what's going to be in our next few years. Like, I don't know what my future looks like. I don't want to go to jail, but if these people touch me, we're going to Huntington Beach, fight, fight, fight. So I'll see you outside. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Just a last call for Natalie Rocos. Are you here? Oh, okay. All right. Then that concludes public comments.
Thank you.
Can you, is it all right if this lady says something?
Sure, go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Joanne Arvizou, and I'm a 50-year resident of the city of Huntington Beach. I'd like to read a poem in honor of Dan, Natalie, Rhonda, and especially Robin. The lies you touched, the burdens you eased, a gentle whisper, a comforting breeze. For all the good you've brought to this world stage, a grateful song, a heartfelt homage to your sage. So let this verse, a token of our praise, reflect the brilliance of your selfless ways. May your good work forever be renowned, a beacon of light where hope is found. Thank you from all of your Huntington Beach friends, and please accept these flowers as a token of appreciation. Thank you.
Thank you. So that was it for public comments?
Yes, that's it.
Okay, moving on to council committee appointment announcements. Council members, do you have any council appointments to announce? AB 1234 reporting, does anyone have anything to report? AB 1234 reporting, does anyone have anything to report?
I do.
Go ahead.
Two weeks ago, I attended the Cal City's Annual Conference and attended multiple charrettes and sessions on local municipal government issues and had some really good meetings with other elected officials around the state. Thank you.
Council member Moser?
I too attended the League of Cities Conference. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, moving on to openness and negotiations, does anyone have anything to disclose?
I do.
Go ahead.
I met with HBMT.
Mayor, I also met with HBMT.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, moving on to city manager's report. Do you have anything to report?
Nothing to report tonight, mayor.
Okay, moving on to city treasurer's report. Please proceed with your report.
Thank you for the opportunity to present the city treasurer's quarterly investment report for the period ended September 30th, 2024. A brief economic update, the Federal Reserve lowered the federal funds rate by 50 basis points in September and another 25 basis points in November to a range of 4.5% to 4.75%. Investors are now expecting a slower pace of rate cuts through 2025. Inflation remains somewhat elevated with solid consumer activity. Headline inflation was up 2 tenths in October with core CPI up almost 3 tenths, a little bit slower, however, from the previous month. The labor market continues to remain fairly resilient with low jobless claims. Currently, funds within the portfolio with overnight availability are invested in the California Asset Management Program or CAMP and Money Market Funds. Other funds are invested in U.S. Treasuries, Super Nationals, U.S. Agencies, and Corporate Bonds. Only investment types allowed under the California Government Code, Section 53601, and the city's investment policy statement are utilized. As of September 30th, the book value of the portfolio was $378.5 million with a market value of $376.6 million. As of September 30th, the portfolio was invested almost 40% in U.S. Agencies, 18% U.S. Treasuries, and about 16% in Corporate Bonds. 12% was invested in Super Nationals, and the remaining 15% was in overnight availability in the CAMP Fund and Money Market Funds. As of September 30th, approximately 36% of the portfolio will mature in zero to one year. That is the blue portion plus the purple portion. Adding in maturities through two years, which is the orange section, accounts for approximately 63% of the portfolio maturing from zero to two years. Approximately 15% of the portfolio matures on the longer end between three and five years. You may have heard the term WHAM, which is the weighted average maturity of a portfolio, or the average length of time until the maturity of all bonds in the portfolio. At this time, it remains at 1.8 years. For the quarter ended September 30th, a total of $40 million was invested, $5 million in U.S. Treasury, $10 million in a federal home loan bank security, $20 million in corporate bonds, including Caterpillar, Home Depot, Amazon, and $5 million in a CAMP fixed-term rate at 4.5% maturing next year in 2025 in August. Approximately $61.8 million matured during the third quarter. For the earnings for the quarter, the month of September was $948,660. This was an increase of approximately 28% from the same month in the prior year. Fiscal year-to-date earnings were $2.9 million, which was up 23% for the same time in the previous fiscal year. The higher earnings were due both to the increase in interest rates and the higher average balance of the portfolio. The effective rate of return for September was 3.1% with a fiscal year-to-date return of 3%. For the quarter ended, the portfolio was in compliance with the investment policy and relevant state codes. You can find additional information on the investment portfolio at the city's website under City Treasurer Investments. Here, the annual investment policy is also posted, as well as monthly and quarterly investment reports. Thank you for the opportunity to present this report. This concludes the report, and if there are any questions, I'm open.
Does anyone on council have any questions?
I'll move to receive and file.
All right, we'll go ahead and vote. Councilmember Moser?
Aye.
Bolton?
Aye.
Burns?
Aye.
Vandermark?
Yes.
Strickland?
Aye.
McKeon?
Yes.
Kalmick?
Aye.
Item passes 7-0.
Thank you. Moving on to item number eight, city treasurer, please proceed with your report.
As there were no changes to the 24, 25 investment policy, I have not prepared a report, but I included that in the packet for your review. If there are any questions, I'm open for questions.
Does anyone have any questions?
I'll move the adoption of resolution.
All right. Yeah, it's Kalmick and Strickland. We'll go ahead and vote. Councilmember Moser?
Aye.
Bolton?
Aye.
Burns?
Aye.
Vandermark?
Yes.
Strickland?
Aye.
McKeon?
Yes.
Kalmick?
Aye.
Item passes 7-0. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to consent calendar, items nine through 25. Would anyone on council like to pull an item?
I'd like to pull 13.
I'll pull 16.
Anyone else?
I'll pull 22.
22?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to move the remaining items.
Second.
Okay, Vandermark and Strickland. Okay, so we're going to move items nine through 12, 14 and 15, 17 through 21, with 19 amended by supplemental communication submitted by our fire chief, and item 23. Let's go ahead and vote. Councilmember Moser?
Aye.
Bolton?
Aye.
Burns?
Aye.
Vandermark?
Yes.
Strickland?
Aye.
McKeon?
Yes.
Kalmick?
Aye.
All right, passes 7-0.
I'm sorry, for clarification, that was through item, item 25, not 23.
Our list has 23.
I'm sorry, I just, I believe you said...
I said 23.
Yeah, I believe it goes through item 25 for the consent calendar.
Oh, okay, then maybe, oh, so it looks like my little list isn't correct.
So, yes, the consent calendar minus the items that you guys pulled. Item 13, 16, and 22.
Okay, so 24 and 25 are included.
Yes, I'm sorry, apologize, my list is wrong here.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Pat Burns, number 13.
Okay, we're here for the second reading of the ordinance change, your amendment 21003. The ordinance here is, that is approving zoning map involved. As I confessed last meeting, a lot of information that I had and still have questions about, there's a lot of information that comes into this. There is, I spent so many hours reading as much as I can on this, and I still have quite a bit of questions. This is a big decision that affects many people in our community in many different ways, so we must try to make this decision on accurate and truthful information. These are residential units and should be treated and evaluated as such. We have heard from many speakers, and the evidence is there in Clearwater Zone paperwork. This project should be evaluated as a residential medium-high-density project, which six of us up here have campaigned against HDD at some point. Also, the EIR is faulty and Clearwater does not include...
All right, point of order, the EIR is not on the agenda tonight, and I don't know based on pending...
It's part of our decision in judging the ordinance. It is part of it.
But it's not on the agenda tonight, and we have pending litigation, so I just would like to have a point of order based on the, from the city attorney about discussing the EIR.
I mean, you do have pending litigation over it, so I would recommend not giving your evaluation of the EIR, but you have, but the council has certified it at this point.
Okay, I'll leave it out then.
But, yeah.
Clearwater does not include what is the normal average amount of second beds added but to allowable to the 159 units. It could be zero, it could be 159, which would change all the parking numbers and other things. With this alone, we should not change this ordinance for this project. If for some reason anyone is still not convinced that this project isn't a residential high-density dwelling project and still wants to approve this project, please consider more information regarding the FAR, the floor area ratio. Throughout the last meeting, there were several references to the FAR variance staying under 10% of the one, 10% added on to the 1.5 FAR. And this was also referred to as reason that project should be approved by several people. And I can give times, but I'll skip the times, at what point in the video of this, we did this, or it was stated. But Mr. Lawless says that if they kept the FAR to 1.5, that it would reduce the project by 19,000 square feet. He then shows a slide that our FAR, and it's quoted, that our FAR is within the 10% of code. He states that the planning director can approve this 10% increase, which would make it 1.65 FAR. This slide that Mr. Lawless puts up to show the public reads, "This minor code deviation for senior living is supported by law." He then states that he requests a minor 10% deviation on FAR to accommodate the seniors. Tofer then gets up and then speaks and refers to the FAR, FAR, a slight variation. Lawless speaks again and says the code permits a 1-point FAR. He responds to a question from Casey that is, "This project is 1.67 FAR." Well, on his one document in this handout, it says that the FAR is 1.66, right on the second last page, right in this graph, right in front of us, which puts it over the 1.65. So it's not within the 10%. He states the, let me see, this slide, I already covered that. Lawless speaks, oh, Casey challenges it, and at what time, the project is actually 1.68 FAR. And he says that without this deviation, it's hard to deliver services that want to, that they want to provide at this facility. Without this deviation, it would be really hard to deliver all these services. The deviation is only 10%. Again, he emphasizes that, which is not true, which is in, within the director's purview, but they have gone over that. Then Tony speaks about, two minutes later, after Lawless, and says, "The applicant has requested for less than a 10% variation on floor area ratio from existing code." Again, emphasizing that it was less than 10%, which it really isn't, we were told differently. Rhonda later speaks and mentions concerns, however, the vote goes, that there are legal considerations to take into account and that there may be a lawsuit by either the appellant or the applicant, which it was confirmed that there is now a lawsuit from the appellant. She then references, that is requested that only a 10% variance from the required FAR isn't unreasonable. But we've exceeded that, again. Immediately after Rhonda's statement, I questioned that the actual plans exceed 10% of variance, but the conversation moved on, and this was not really discussed or refuted by anyone. It just kinda got lost in the conversation. Natalie also later acknowledges the FAR variance. Bottom line is that the variance exceeds the 10% that was allowed. And the variance being under 10% was stated, was used as justification to give this project a yes vote. We were misled, told, misinformed, or boldly lied to by the developers themselves that the variance was kept under 10%. Rhonda correctly stated that this could lead to a lawsuit, and it has. There was a limit of 10% placed on the variance, and it was exceeded. 1.65 FAR is the top end of the 10%, not 1.66, not 1.67, and not 1.68 FAR. At which point do we ignore the limit? Another 10%, another 15% or more? Where does it stop? It should have stopped at the 10% that was given to them. Even the developers' own slides show it exceeds 10%, and later admits that it is inaccurate and that the FAR is 1.68, not 1.66, and the FAR still exceeds the 10%. We were misled or blatantly lied to, and the project stayed within, to that the project stayed within the 10%, and we should not reward this with passing this ordinance. And this misinformation presented may be enough to repeal, revoke, or reverse this resolution, the resolutions amendments. I cannot support this ordinance, and I ask that a, no, none of us up here support it. I think the two, one lady, I don't know which one, said it very clearly, that, and the other speakers, that this is a residence, and we were misled. And I, like I say, the develops want, developers want to build it, they want to make money, and I have no problem with it. But we up here on this dais need to kinda stay with the boundaries, and they've exceeded it, and they've misrepresented that. And that 159, which units can add beds, it changes kind of everything. And it's, we're, I think we jumped the gun on approving this, and I just want to reconsider us passing this ordinance and give it a no vote tonight, so we can reconsider it later on down the line. It's, I think, the community has spoken, and it's, I think we'd be very negligent if we let this go by unanswered, this violation of the variance. And that's all at this point.
Anyone else? Councilmember Kalmick?
Thank you. Again, I'm really disappointed that we still haven't been able to get through all the documentation for this project. It's been two months now, Mayor Pro Tem. You made a lot of comments tonight that I think exposed the city to litigation, and I want to be able to put that into the record, some of the correct terms and the correct understanding of what was presented to the city council. You may not have understood it, but what was presented to the city council was not a variance. So a variance is the technical term used in planning, and there was no variance presented.
I use quotes from the video.
Sure, but varying from something in a variance, they're two very different things when it comes to land use. And I want to be very clear that there was no variance discussed. FAR is used in commercial projects, not residential projects. The fact that this is a very ordinary assisted living facility, and our land use describes it as an assisted living facility, not a residential project. We have done many assisted living facilities, and they are approached as a commercial project, which is why we're talking about FAR. Additionally, the FAR that was presented, when you discuss a 10% deviation, which I think the term you want to use is opposed to variance...
I use quotes again.
Sure, but...
Their own people used a slight variation. So I just, it misleads the, it misleads the 10%.
Unfortunately, as the decision makers, I didn't find it to be misleading at all. I thought it was quite clear. A 10% deviation from the design standards are allowed by the director. The reason they asked us for something more than that was because they were beyond the 10% that the director could apply.
He said that he stayed under, though.
I don't remember that.
Several times. I do, I watched the video about five times.
I went by with the documents that were presented and the actual...
1.66, right here, second last page.
In the, in the specific plan, the actual legal documents that we approved and read through, that discussed what the FAR could be capped at, and I believe the FAR in the specific plan is 1.75, to be honest. So the legal implications of the specific plan were passed, and that's not what's on the table tonight. We already approved that specific plan. What's on the table tonight is the general, excuse me, is the zoning text amendment, which is just the standard second reading of the legal document. But again, this was not a project that was outside the ordinary. It is not residential development. I'm sorry that the appellant continues to present this to the community as residential development. This has facilities in it that are designed to assist people as they end, as they get towards the end of their life, right? This is, this has nurses' quarters, this has nurse facilities, nurse stations. It is not built as a residential building, and I don't know why anyone would spend the money to build... money to build a commercial building to make it residential. Like, why would you go through all the efforts to try to build this as a commercial building? And the fact that it is now encumbered, uh, based on the, uh, land use entitlement that we approved, that is encumbered as assisted living, does not mean that it's residential. And this consistent narrative that lies to the community that this is a high-density residential development is not what it is. Like, this is an assisted living facility. These, the people that live here, live here for two years and then go to skilled nursing. This is not a party house, this is not a bunch of people coming down from.
Where are you getting that?
From the documentation about it. If you read.
Two years, well, I got us 1.66 in the document and then they say 1.67, 68.
The specific plan states 1.75 and then they come back and apply for the project under 1.75 FAR.
You might not be, mind being lied to, but I do.
I wasn't being lied to because I read the documents that we approved.
I read everything.
Like, if you misunderstood what they were talking about, that's on you.
No, you're, well, you, because you say it, it isn't true. It doesn't make it true because you say it.
Because what you, what we legally passed as the council, um, is what actually is the law and that's what we approved last meeting. So I, it's unfortunate that you still hadn't had time to review this entire project. These are not residential units. These are, this is a standard, very boring, um, uh, commercial project that's an assisted living facility. We have land use designations in our commercial code for assisted living facilities. And so I am disappointed, um, that the appellant has already sued the city. I understand that they had a 30-day tick-tock window on the environmental, um, and that's why they had to file suit to, and to maintain their rights under the SEQA document. But the city is, uh, the applicant will be defending that SEQA lawsuit, not the city. Um, so I just wanted to make sure very clear that, um, I, it was very clear as to what this project is, uh, what this project will be, and what the city council took action on. That we, the specific plan that was approved was very clear as to what was going to be built here. Uh, the number of units were very clear. SEQA doesn't even take into account, uh, parking. Uh, so, uh, I, I think it's somewhat irrelevant in this conversation with regard to the specific plan, but, um, again, I think this is something that the city drastically is going to need in the future. We are going to need assisted living for our aging population. I think the location is, is superb on two major arterials. I think that the traffic modeling for this is not going to be, um, the traffic is not going to be an impact to the community.
Isn't that part of the ER that we're not supposed to be discussing?
I'm discussing the specific plan amendment.
Oh, okay.
I mean, if you've read the ER, you'd, you'd know, but it appears that hasn't happened yet. So I'm going to go ahead and move the item, um, tonight. Uh, I think this is just a second reading for something that we, I think debated at length and I don't believe there's any new information that's been presented at this time.
Okay then, items being moved.
Thank you, Mayor. So, um, to the point, the question about whether this is a commercial or residential development, I want to pose a question to the staff, so, and to whoever can answer this question. So would the units in this assisted living facility count toward the state mandated residential allotment that, that has been assigned to the city of Huntington Beach?
No, we don't count any units in assisted living facilities that aren't independent living. And this project doesn't have any.
Okay, this project doesn't have any independent living. For that reason, um, and this may be useful information to the public, this is not a residential facility. Um, you know, I kind of feel like we've already been tarred and feathered, painted with this brush of being in favor of something that is not what this is. And so, you know, you, in a way, you've created a perverse incentive. Now you come back and ask us to change the decision that we've made, but you've already tarred and feathered us for making that decision. So, no, I do not believe that it is residential development. I believe that it is commercial development. And I also, um, you know, I've read all of the material that has been submitted since our October 15th meeting and I do not see anything, um, that, um, you know, prompts me to think that we need to make a different decision. So I will be supporting the item. Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilmember Moser.
Uh, really, I would repeat what Councilmember Kalmak and Bolton have said, but the primary thing is, we are going to need senior housing in this city, number one. However, this is not senior housing. This is not residential. This is commercial. This is assisted living. It is so unfortunate that there has been so many lies presented about this project. I've met with staff, I have met with the developer, I've met with the others as well. And I do trust our staff to make sure, since they have the professional expertise, to let us know if we are being misled with regards to something being a commercial versus a residential project. I think that would have come up right away. And I think that Councilmember Bolton's question, which I asked previously in the previous meeting about whether these units would qualify for the RENA numbers, is very important. These are not residential units. And so there have been varying discussions about, the concerns about the project. But one of the main ones has been whether this is commercial or residential. And it is commercial, it is assisted living. And I think it's really important as we move forward that we place truth and fact at the forefront. We can still disagree about the size of something, we can disagree about those types of things. I, I totally understand that and I am open to, to hearing those types of questions and concerns. What we are talking about today, though, is an approval of the zoning text amendment and it is for the development as we approved it at the last meeting. I am still in approval of that project as a commercial assisted living development and I will be supporting this item. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember McKean.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to kind of cut through all that noise and just be honest with everybody. The, the reason why a large contingent of this community has an issue with this project is because by definition, it is too dense, or you want to call it high-density residential commercial, it is too dense. And the reason why is because the allowed floor area ratio under the current zoning is 1.5. This project is 1.68 and they need a specific plan in order to make it fit. So they're changing the zoning of this specific property to make this project fit. They're shoehorning it into this property. Right across the street at the northeast corner of Main and New York Town is a very exact same project, assisted living facility, and the property is big enough to allow them to meet the 1.5 floor area ratio and therefore they do not need a specific plan to make it fit. A perfect example of the same exact project on a property that's the right size. I used the analogy last time, I'm in commercial real estate in the retail sector. We as developers know exactly what size property we need for our development. As an example, Chick-fil-A and In-N-Out, I know they need at least an acre in order to make their, their, uh, project fit. I'm not going to go tie up a gas station site, which is usually half an acre, and then go to the city and use a heavy-handed approach of a specific plan in order to shoehorn that property into that small site. Same, the exact same example here. They use, well, they were able to, last, at the last meeting, the applicant said they were able to get more land, et cetera. Fine, but they made it fit. This property could do the same thing, get a land from the adjacent neighbor, make the property big enough. Therefore, you would not require a specific plan. When you distill it down, that is the issue that residents have and by definition, it makes it dense. What do you want to call it? High-density? It is too dense for this property because the property is too small. It's not our job as council members to make projects fit on properties that are too small. Go find a bigger property. I understand that's challenging to do so, but it's not our job to make our project fit for you. So that's my issue. Thank you.
So we have a motion and a second.
Could I have the name of the second? I didn't catch that.
Oh, nobody seconded, actually.
I don't think so. All right, Strickland. Okay, are we ready to vote? Let's go ahead. Councilmember Moser.
Aye.
Bolton?
Aye.
Burns?
No.
Vandermark?
No.
Strickland?
Aye.
McKean?
Yes.
Kalmak?
Aye.
Item passes 4-3 with councilmembers Burns, Vandermark, and McKean voting no.
Okay, Councilmember Kalmak, number 16.
Thank you. I brought this forward for a couple of reasons. One, um, I just wanted to make sure that staff, I think it wants in the way, um, was, uh, this was processed in a reasonable amount of time, right? There were some emails that were going back and forth asking, you know, the length of time that this took to get through. Are there any other issues with Mills Act stuff in the, in the past or in the future? Or was this just processed, it just because of the timing of when these have to be completed by?
I'd have to check when we received it, but I believe it was processed in a reasonable amount of time. These are usually pretty perfunctory once we get the review going.
Okay, all right, thank you. So I, and again, I just wanted to pull this to give any council members an opportunity to vote no on effectively giving away property tax, uh, for the city, um, for, uh, public policy determination, in this case, the public policy determination is to, for historical preservation. I'll be supporting this because I believe that it is, uh, council's right, uh, and, uh, public, good public policy to use property tax, uh, to help either historic preservation or provide for moderate affordable housing. So I'll go ahead and move the item.
I'll second.
Okay, we'll go ahead and take a vote. Councilmember Moser.
Aye.
Bolton?
Aye.
Burns?
Aye.
Vandermark?
Yes.
Strickland?
Aye.
McKean?
Yes.
Kalmak?
Aye.
Item passes 7-0.
Thank you. Councilmember Bolton, number 22.
Thank you, Mayor. So, um, this is a facilities condition assessment project and I just wanted to ask staff to, um, discuss it in a little more detail so that the public can understand what these assessments involve and then how this ties into the infrastructure report card, which is a process that we started in the early part of 2022 and I know folks are still waiting for that infrastructure report card to come out. So if any, if someone could, um, uh, go through this PowerPoint real quick. And then also I have a specific question on page two, um, about the date of the last assessment that we did. I think it says 2007 on the PowerPoint, or at least the version I saw, and I'm wondering if that's correct or if it's 2017. Oh, okay, yep, the version I have then. That's correct. Yeah, okay. Thank you, Councilmember Bolton. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Tonight, uh, staff is presenting, uh, facilities condition assessment to be approved before council. A facility condition assessment is a comprehensive evaluation of the building's physical condition. This assessment involves a comprehensive inspection and analysis of various elements including structural, mechanical, electrical, and plumbing. It looks at all of our structures and it tells us what's its condition, what's its current state. Is it poor? Is it good? Is it failing? It identifies necessary repairs and also tells us what projects to prioritize, what should be, um, identified in our CIP for upcoming budget. And as you mentioned, the assessment was done back in 2007. That is not a typo. It's overdue. So in our funding schedule, uh, we want to award it to the Gordian Facility Condition Assessment. The funding is about 424,000. It is funded in our general fund. We did budget for this. This assessment will take about 90 days with the 30-day options in case if anything's And we need this assessment. It's critical. It tells us what we need to change, what type of, um, building codes we need to follow. It identifies safety, functionality, and longevity of the assets for our overall infrastructure. Once again, it's comprised of data collection, standardization, consistency. It identifies costs. It's going to tell us how much these components are going to cost us. It will give us a phasing plan, how long, when should we replace these items. It also integrates with our facilities management program. It identifies risk management, support for funding requests, as well as long-term asset Overall, the city has 1.5 million square feet of city facilities, so we need to have this plan ready for us. That concludes my report. Are there any questions from council?
Okay, yeah, so I just wanted to clarify. Thank you for that presentation. So the, the relationship between this type of report and the infrastructure report card is, and you, I don't want to put words in your mouth, it sounds like this is more detailed and it has the costing and the prioritizing and phasing. And it sounds like infrastructure report card is more of a 30,000-foot examination of everything that we have.
That is correct.
Okay, great, thank you. I will move the item, by the way.
I'll second.
I have a question. And I've asked it before. With regards to the infrastructure report card, and I know that that is not this per se, but it is related, um, when is that being planned to be presented? Will it be in concurrence with this or before? What, what can we expect?
The report card has been completed. We do know our grades. However, we have taken the item to our executive committee and the recommendation is to not present it to the public until the video has been completed and so that there's a whole package ready to go with the public so that our OCC, our outreach committee, can disseminate this information. So it has been postponed.
Okay. So what was, just remind me again, of the timeline for this, was it 90 days?
For the, yes, 90 days, that's correct.
So I can make an assumption that once this is done, um, work is going to continue to be done on, with the executive committee on the infrastructure report card? Is that correct? And they will come out together likely?
The report card should come out sooner.
Sooner, okay. That's good to know. So hopefully before 90 days. Yes. Okay, thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions?
Okay, we'll go ahead and vote. Councilmember Moser.
Aye.
Bolton?
Aye.
Burns?
Aye.
Vandermark?
Yes.
Strickland?
Aye.
McKean?
Yes.
Kalmak?
Aye.
Item passes 7-0.
Okay, moving on to administrative items. Staff, please introduce your report.
Thank you, Mayor. Marissa Surr will provide the staff report.
Hi, good evening, uh, Mayor and members of city council. I have two administrative items for your consideration tonight, um, side letters with the Huntington Beach Firefighters Association and Fire Management Association. And if it's okay with you, I'll consolidate my two presentations into one.
Sure.
All right. So the items before you tonight are two proposed side letters with, um, the Huntington Beach Firefighters Association and Fire Management Association. As a matter of background, the city adopted the current MOUs with these two groups on January 16th of 2024. They both, excuse me, um, are set to expire at the end of 2026. The side letter up for consideration tonight for Fire Management Association, now, this is where they differ. Fire Management Association is considered a cleanup item. It's related to, um, amending the current MOU language related to uniform allowance reporting to CALPERS. This is a result of a recent determination by CALPERS that the MOU as written does not meet their criteria for, um, the special compensation to be reported. This isn't a matter of changing any amount that's being reported or cash in hand to the employees. It's specifically a cleanup item so that CALPERS will accept the city's report.
Marissa, can you explain what that cleanup, cleanup item is?
Yes, so specifically it is adding the dollar amount for FMA, it's adding the dollar amount that the city is reporting and has been reporting to the MOU.
So they just want to specifically codify it in the document?
Yes, yeah, so while the current, um, MOU states, and this is historically how it's been, that the city will provide that amount to CALPERS, um, absent the dollar amount specifically, CALPERS will not accept what the city has been reporting.
Okay.
So then speaking to HBFA, there are two items there, so similar to HBFA, I'm sorry, similar to FMA, the uniform allowance came up with that as well. So the side letter would, um, propose to incorporate the dollar amounts that the city is currently reporting. And then in addition to that, there's added language to address staffing changes for the fire department if they were to receive grant funding at a future time. So, um, speaking to FMA specifically, um, the side letter amends Article 7 to include dollar amounts being reported to CALPERS. Again, the city has been reporting this amount, uh, which is included in the side letter. It's roughly $1,500 per year. However, although the city has been reporting this because the MOU currently does not state that specific dollar amount, CALPERS won't accept the reporting. Speaking to HBFA, this, uh, side letter amends Article 8 of the current MOU, um, and it includes dollar amounts specifically for their uniforms. HBFA is a little different from FMA because they also receive a physical fitness uniform, but in total, the annual amount is reported for the employees. Again, this would just be adding the dollar amount the city is already reporting. And then specifically for HBFA, this only applies to them. The fire department is currently applying for and seeking a SAFER grant. The addition is, um, the department's also requesting to amend the MOU and has met with the association on this to address staffing changes related to potential future acceptance of the SAFER grants. If awarded, this is a three-year grant to fund the additional firefighter paramedic positions. Additional language addresses staffing levels and how employees hired under the SAFER grant will be absorbed through attrition if and when the funding period ends. Uh, this is designed to allow the fire department, again, if they receive the grant funding, to be able to recruit for full-time employees in these positions. Since it's a three-year limited term that the city would be receiving the funding, typically you'd see the city seeking to hire somebody in a limited-term capacity, but in order to attract and retain, um, fully qualified and willing to stay with the city for a longer period of time, we want to get somebody who wants to come. you'd see the city seeking to hire somebody in a limited-term capacity, but in order to attract and retain fully qualified and willing to stay with the city for a longer period of time, we want to get somebody who wants to come here and stay here. Then with that in mind, the city would like to, and the association agrees, essentially absorb these FTE at the end. So it wouldn't be adding any FTE at this time. It would simply, it's simply outlining, outlining an agreement between the association and the fire department on how this would be handled in the future. So city council options for both would be, the staff recommendation is to adopt the resolution and amend the current MOUs with both associations, or you can reject the recommendation.
I move that we adopt both side letters for the Huntington Beach Firefighters and the Huntington Beach Fire Management Association.
Second.
Real quick, Marissa, there have been some claims in the community that this is pension, corrupt pension spiking. I just want to clarify that these amounts for the uniforms are already being reported to CALPERS, but CALPERS just wanted the specific dollar amount codified.
Correct, correct. This is a result of a CALPERS compliance unit that is now auditing MOUs more than they ever have, and noticed this was an omission, so it's separate from any other claims.
Thank you.
Okay, so the motion is for number 26 and 27.
And who made this second? I'm sorry.
I did.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll go ahead and vote on admin items 26 and 27. Councilmember Moser.
Aye.
Bolton.
Aye.
Burns.
Aye.